And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, John, you're up.
All right. Well, good morning, first of all. Excited to share that we have done two new nursing scholarship sponsors for the hospital, for a couple individuals. We always strive to kind of grow our own and to have a program like this is really great where they fall through with this and then they come back to our hospital and they have to work a year or two depending on how long we do the sponsorship with them. And we love doing that because, one, it helps people fulfill their educational desires, and, two, it helps bring those resources locally for us. And nursing's a tough area right now across the country, so to have this kind of support here is great.
So you guys are finally getting your show.
No, it's through the state.
Oh, it's through the state.
Yeah, it's through the state, yeah. Yep. And then last Wednesday, the clinic was closed, like a lot of things due to power and stuff, so that was unfortunate. But we were able to get it back up once power was on. And as far as our new clinic goes, they're still continuing construction, cabinetry, painting, window installation. It's getting closer. We are anticipating June to open. As part of that, we do have to notify CMS that we'll be relocating the clinic, that we'll be doing that. That's a little bit of a process that we're working through. They have their own forms and processes we have to go through. So we're working on that. And to follow up, I talked to you guys last time about Senate Bill 284 that did pass through the committee and it passed through the Senate and it's gone on to the House. And the House is tenuous whether they're going to vote on it this year or not. So we're asking people to reach out if you would to Ken Rahas, 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 I'm not sure who he pronounces his last name, our state House Rep.
Rogers.
Rogers, thank you. And encourage them to have a vote on it this year so that they can go through. And just a reminder, what that does is it limits drug manufacturers from being able to say, you guys can only have one contract pharmacy for this 340B program. And it also limits them from saying, well, we need a bunch of administrative reporting back on this. So it helps minimize our burden to maintain that program as well. So it's a good, good program. Also, the hospital will be getting a new access control system. It's one of those, you know, your badges you go in the door. There's going to be several additions to that. And it'll be a good system. We're remodeling some patient bathrooms, needed it for a long time. Just had a board meeting last week and that got approved. And we're going to be able to use some of our grant funds that we got to help build the clinic, to help fund some of that as well, and a couple other patient room remodels as well. So we're excited about those things, excited about how things are progressing. And yeah, grateful to be here, grateful to be part of the community. And what else do you guys need? I want to invite you to our strategic planning meeting. They'll be April 21st and 22nd. Don't have a solid place yet. I'll let you know. From 2:30 PM to 4:30 PM on the 21st and 11 AM to 1:00 on the 22nd, if you're able to make it, we'd love to have you guys there to have your input on kind of needs you see in the community that the hospital can help fill. That'd be beneficial, so.
Absolutely, yes. So just to kind of follow up, I watched last week when we were talking about the ventilator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did play with that one. The one that, we actually have a guy coming, and Michelle's getting people lined out for that. He's going to come and educate all of us on, more in-depth on ventilator settings and airway type of stuff like that. So that ventilator, we won't have to come get anymore because if we can kind of keep that one off by its lonesome. I know you need it from time to time.
Sure.
In fact, I think I took one of your airway places, but they end up buying something.
Yeah.
Embarrassing, but other than that, it works well.
Okay.
It'll be, and it's small enough that we can transport with it. And we were actually looking at maybe making a bracket so we can actually adjust it so it goes to the cot on.
Oh, great.
We had to set it on before on top of the patient. This way, if we can hang it from the cot, it'd be much better for everybody.
Sure.
We don't really want to get into doing that on a regular basis, but as we know, we might need it and it's important to have, so.
Yeah, very important. Thanks for checking into that.
Yeah, it'll work fine. It'll work fine.
Well, that's great. That's a big piece of the puzzle for us, yeah.
Yeah, it will fit everything that we have for the ambulance and we can actually, you know, you'll probably start on yours and then we'll bring that one in for the transfer out with it.
Okay.
But we'd like to keep it at the hospital.
Okay.
And then you guys, you guys run a check on it every year anyway.
Yeah.
So that way we know it'll be checked regularly, so.
Awesome.
That was kind of what Nikki and I, and I haven't really had a chance to talk to Michelle because I'm on vacation.
Sure.
And I can't think after that.
I understand. I can't either.
But I think it'll work good.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. And we are, like I mentioned last week, I think we're all taking that issue very, very seriously. And I think we do have a really great plan moving forward. And fortunately, it is a situation that is few and far in between, but we definitely want to be prepared to take care of people when that happens.
Yeah. What matters to us.
Yep. Yeah, we're here to take care of people. That's why we got into this, so. You guys have anything for me? Any concerns, questions?
None.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you. See ya.
See ya.
Okay, Kendra, what do you have for new business?
I already gave you guys the payroll vouchers, payroll tables to review. I do have the abstract of minutes for March 11th for you to sign for me. And then in your guys' binders, you'll find the update on the Rural Hospital Innovation Grant from the CFO at Grand County Hospital. That's just for your guys' information and your view only. And the correspondence from the Grand County Attorney in regards to the Grand County personnel questions. That's also informational only. That comes from last week's discussions. And then there's also information on the 49th Annual Kansas County Commissioners Association Conference. That's informational only. If you guys do want me to register you guys for that, let me know and I can get you guys to register. Otherwise, you guys can register on your own and.
I have already registered for that.
You already registered? Okay.
I checked with Dan and he had, still had some money in that fund for education.
Perfect.
I talked to you both and so I'll go there since I'm the new cat.
Perfect, perfect.
Perfect.
Perfect. And then just the minutes for March 18th. I'm not sure if you guys have a chance to. And then Jason Lubinville started with Dan yesterday. So he's busy getting a wealth of knowledge. Kind of all of his new high paper work starting. And that's all I have for you guys.
Are these minutes from last week?
Are you confused?
I am.
Okay, so your binder should have, I put in last week's stuff is going to go, so this week is going to go to the blue tab. And then this is last week.
Last week, yeah. Make a mention in the notes.
One second.
Okay.
All right.
Hey.
Hey.
Hello, gentlemen.
How you doing, guys?
Good. The brain makes flow soon, but I'm overlooking. It's swelling.
And again, I just came to highlight, you all can highlight, so. They're on TV still picking, guys.
You don't used to care, do you? Is Michelle here today?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Dan and Jason, you're up.
All right. As far as highlights, the one I want to point out for sure is from the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, Kason Mock had, he didn't place, but he won the People's Choice Award. And his business is Mock Nine Racing. And I'm excited about it. He called, wanted me to meet with him. Like I said, I gave my cards to everybody there. And so he came in with his mom. And kid's 14 years old and he's on to something. Mock Nine Racing is remote controlled cars. And he gets sponsorships. I talked Christie Crestedman to call him Steve Radley with Network Kansas. They're going to sponsor one of his cars. He's got like 15 cars. His business plan that he's working on for financing is to buy a trailer, build a mobile track, and take it on the road to fairs and various community events and charge like five bucks for, three bucks for five minutes for people to race the remote controlled cars on the track. I think it's a genius idea. Kid's 14 years old and his dad's been helping with it. And then he's got a buddy that he's going to partner with that does, was it crawling or climbing?
RC crawling.
Yeah.
Have moved that to RC.
Yeah, of course, now. So I told him, I said, even when I'm gone, I'd love to work with him on that and see it come to fruition. I've already talked to the bank about it and told them about it and told him, I said, you get bank financing. I said, this is perfect E-community loan program material because everything he does is going to bring new money back into the community. And be a way for him to, you know, if he decides to go to college, to help fund college, and if he decides not to, boom, he's in business on a travel basis for just that. We also discussed the possibility of down the road, him setting up a shop, literally for sales and repairs. I have no idea how popular remote controlled car racing and tracking and stuff is, but it's something up and coming. I mentioned I met with his mother also. She's looking at establishing a group counseling, a grief counseling group through her church. Put her in touch with several possible funding sources as far as foundations to help her get going with that and suggested the same thing, a business plan to put together everything that she wants to do with it, whether it's for profit, not profit. It's always good to have a plan in place. I used to work for a guy that said, if you fail the plan, your plan will fail. So that's been something that I've lived by and kind of pushed on as well. Housing Committee met, pretty much decided we need a representative from the city of Hill City on that committee. So they're going to be working on that, getting somebody involved. The Hayek meeting, or it's the Housing Interagency Committee is meeting on April 29th in Great Bend. Corina, Cory, and Dennis Murch are going to go. We'll hook Jason up with that too, so he's in on it. It's a review of the hat and also a chance to hear from all the resource partners from USDA Rural Development, Rural Housing, Kansas Housing, KHRC, Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, Department of Commerce, all of those as far as what the plans are. And again, we're focusing on the Sunset Edition. Same goes for the Memorial School Building as far as a possibility too. The EIC allocated $1,500. We applied for and got for the assistance in putting an RHID in place. The cost is actually with Gilmore and Bell, the attorney fees involved is $6,500. And typo there, $6,500. So Corina's returning the $1,500 to the EIC. Can't do it for that amount and wouldn't cover the cost. Because the $1.5 million the Economic Innovation Center was seeking from the legislature was denied, it's recommended that without a developer for the Sunset Boulevard project, wait on that cost for the RHID. We have another individual that expressed interest in it. Cory Simonova bought a couple lots on the north end, but again, the extension of that street, Sunset Boulevard Street to Hill Street is going to be the infrastructure needs along with water, sewer, so on, electric. But the big cost is going to be that street on forward. So there's a possibility of putting together a project with two to three houses and extending that street just to a dead end like it is now, but extending it depending upon the cost. So that's something we're going to continue to pursue. Got the leadership Grand County plaque updated with this year's classes, class members, and their last meeting will present them with the travel mugs, alumni travel mugs. We got those, had those for quite a while now. As far as highlights, that's kind of it from last week. Oh. I know it's in here. I didn't mark it. Oh, we got notice that the, our application for the KDHE Waste Tire Grant has been awarded. It's for the benches along Trexler Trail and we'll get 50% of it upfront. We'll cover the other half and then once it's completed, we'll get the other 50%. So sent an email to Kim Trexler and Wayne Piper with the information. Wayne's the one that's going to be able to place them where Ken wants them. And Heisman is more familiar, both of them, more familiar with that trail than anybody. But that way we'll have some benches along the trail that guys like me would like to walk it, but need somewhere to sit down along the way. I know I'm not the only one.
We're here because we don't want to walk it.
And we worked with Alec Champlin with Champlin Tire Recycling. He's the one that provided us with the information on the grant and quoted us four three-foot benches. And like I said, Road and Bridge Park will install them where Ken and Wayne think are best to have them. Oh, the other one is Alexander Engel's Business Summary from the YEC event. That's the A1 Service Expert Services, I think it was called. Anyway, it's not only too often the YEC competitions, you got babysitting and lawn mowing and that kind of thing. Well, he went a step beyond in terms of landscaping, flowers, snow removal, a full-blown business. And he's got a guy, a partner with him, he's already doing it, but needs to expand. So I worked with him on kind of upgrading. He's the one that won the competition, upgrading his business plan, his business summary. And so he'll go to state with a little better quality in terms of business plan. And hopefully, he continues to grow and that'll be another local business startup locally as far as entrepreneurs. That's the great thing about the YEC. The ones that are, I think I may have told you this story out in Goodland one year. This guy took second place, had a great business plan for a tack saddle shop. And I gave him my card. I said, this is something you want to pursue. I'd be glad to help you with it as far as business plan and so on. He looked me right in the eye. He says, as soon as I graduate, I'm out of here. I'm hit the rodeo circuit. I just did this for class. So you have those, but you also have those that are passionate about it and want to do it. They don't see college in their future and they know what they want to do. And I think that's fantastic. Gives them a step up in going in the business world. Other than that, this week, been moving right along with Jason in terms of going through everything. I think I overloaded him yesterday. So after this, we're going to go to Nextec and get him a phone. We may have to realign the budget. I have no idea what the cost's going to be. You mentioned you didn't want to plan on a county plan or a plan for the county. So we'll go get him a phone and on his account and I'll show him on the vouchers. I'll just submit that for reimbursement. Kind of go from there. Questions?
What do you think, man?
It's a lot of info. But yeah, he's a wealth of information. So, you know, keep picking his brain while we have and go from there.
Okay.
There's a lot going on. We got a new setup. We'll look at it. Hanson Foundation Forum on Thursday where a lot of information we just went through. There's, that's where I'm doing a round table on the Pitch Report Program for other people to look at and consider. That's the same one we did with the 13 Ways to Kill Your Community Book Club we did last year. We found five other roundtables that Jason will go to that kind of fit in with what we're doing and will help. And he'll meet a lot of, a lot of regional economic development people as well as resource partners there. Grab business cards from everybody, yeah. And just, just set up another meeting this morning with Kansas Build Fund, the Kansas Hub for Infrastructure with, there are the meeting in Dorton that Dallas Gosling put together up there. So Jason will go up there on the 22nd of April. We'll go from there. And I'll show him how to check out cars and all that too. That's on my transition list.
Very good. Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Think he's going to do well. Passion is there. Lots of questions, lots of answers.
Mm-hmm.
And we're just getting started.
Yeah. It's a little bit of a curve. Thank you, man.
Yes, I was hoping.
That don't make sense to me.
Who's next?
Yes. Grab them all in. Just two minutes.
I'm sure.
How you doing, David?
Good. I'm not being rude. I have my minutes on my notes. I got a good memory. It's super short. Hello, how are you?
Very good.
I'm good.
And they put you in charge. That's.
It's kind of scary in there, I know.
What, sir? What the hell are you doing?
It's nice out, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Gorgeous.
I was telling Jared to take a little trip with the kids to Oklahoma City.
Oh, yeah.
Quite a place now. They got all kinds of stuff. But we did the Federal Building bombing Timothy McVeigh.
Oh, yeah.
That's crazy. That's crazy. They even have his car in that museum.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I need to go down there.
Yeah, it's cool. Okay, Randy, you're up.
Ready? Okay, guys. Since I recorded last, we have 33 residents, so I've had a couple admissions, so.
So the Pella representative came, um, and he was super nice, and he is gonna replace four of those windows, so it'll be about another four weeks, they had to order them, and then he'll come back. He was out of Dodge City, so um it was, it was nice to work with him. Um, our leadership team, uh we were, our team went through one leadership training, and we have another one next week, actually, is our, it's a two-session one. Um, so we really enjoyed that. Our team has learned a lot of valuable leadership skills, so I'm excited to bring that back into Dawson, or bring that to Dawson and and see where that takes us. Um, April fifteenth, um, I've spread the word, if you guys can help me, that's that free community educational um evening that we're having, Klink Skill is presenting that, it's at six P M. Um, and that is on estate planning, wills, things like that, that the public, I mean, everybody needs to know about that. So it's free, so please come on down to the community center. Uh, CNA clinicals, they just got done last night. Uh, class still goes on for another four weeks, but there was nine individuals, and out of those, there was four, yeah, four of them turned in applications for PR and CNA, so they're in school, so I was super excited about that, so we can hopefully grow them and and keep them with us. Um, April eighteenth, it's a Saturday, is Dawson's Easter egg hunt, so I put flyers out, I sent it to the school, um, so all the littles, bring them on up. We're gonna do that at eleven o'clock. And then April seventeenth is our Dawson Easter dinner. Um, it's with our residents and our family, and so far, the staff told me there's like fifteen to sixteen that are already um RSVP'd, and they still have time, so that might still grow from there. So that's kinda what we're doing, plugging away. You guys have any questions or?
Just to comment on the Klink Skill people?
Yeah.
That is, for those that are thinking about that, Klink Skill, they do a great presentation.
So they're, oh, they're a law firm I age, yeah, and they specialize in elderly um law, and they do work with some of our residents currently, you know, and a lot of people refer to them, but they do, they do these free educational topics, and so um I'm already lining up one in August, and I would like to host that one at Dawson. We're just trying to figure out the best topic, you know, for that one, but yeah, I'm I'm excited about that, because unfortunately, you know, time you get to that point in life, you're already behind the eight ball. And so it's something, if we can plant the seed now and start thinking about it, and having people get their documentation and everything in in mind, it's, it'll help tremendously.
You're getting a big milestone.
So, yeah, and they're super nice to work with, and we've heard nothing but good things from some of our residents that have worked with them. Um, they have one uh educational topic they talk about, and it's labeled How to Save the Farm, and that's one I wanna bring into, um, you know, how to convert, you know, and save your assets, and then convert it to where, you know, because the majority of the people are on Medicaid when it comes to their nursing home, it's just people who are outliving their money, and so um, you know, how how do you go about that the right way, but not lose everything you've worked for your whole life? So you can do it, you just gotta take proper steps in planning. It doesn't happen overnight. So, yeah, so hopefully I'll see you guys down there. I got cookies. I didn't make them, so you're good.
Well, Randy, I just wanna say, I hear nothing but great things, and I think you're doing amazing job.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Our elders are so important, and yeah.
Thank you.
So happy with the direction everything's going.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I would like to set up a time, maybe come?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
That's two runs a group.
Okay. Yeah, I love that. Okay, we'll get together. Yeah, come see that Oracle.
Yeah.
That's a huge chat, people love that.
Get the windows and come look at it for that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you can do that, absolutely.
I thought you were gonna say a room for me.
Yeah. I do have that one room yet, yeah. Uh, I am still working, I talked last time a little bit about the crash part, you know, that I explained to them what that is, I'm still working on that, so once I get that done and presented, I'll bring that back to you guys, but yeah, absolutely, we can set a time up and and come tour. Okay, all right, thanks, guys.
Way to go. All right, I guess take a recess for the next ten minutes. Any doctors for me to sign today?
There is payroll vouchers, payroll camel vouchers.
Yeah, you have to sign all. Is there, is there anyone there?
We need an alternate.
Oh, no, I missed.
You guys signed all of the yellow ones? You two, Dan and yours?
I don't think they did, yeah. I have, oh, yeah, no, they're working on it.
Do you have a pen?
Sure.
Always just bring a pencil and you can all make mistakes.
What are you doing? I'm playing your horse. I got nothing while I'm gone. Oh, man.
Three.
She brought a snowstorm.
What's up?
She brought a snowstorm.
I did, I did. Came on quick there, went away quick.
Absolutely.
We'll take all the moisture we can get, though.
In that group, yeah. Do you have power outage and such stuff?
Uh, we have a light switch for an oval, but we didn't have the power where I was at. We didn't get near as much snow as you guys did.
Oh, is that right?
I think we had about three, maybe four inches, but.
It's not here now. Sure, I started to get five inches maybe, I guess. All the drills. They're dropping fast.
We lost power here about five in the morning, we didn't get back till a migrate, it's like one piece more.
Level trouble, thank you.
Level trouble.
You know, he sat in the middle. I'm gonna put stairs.
Stand there.
Yeah.
Louder.
All right, Les and Bob, you're up.
Well, as you see, we just gave you some some bids for I T. Uh, what we found out was come October the fourteenth, any computer that cannot do the Windows eleven is gonna be non-compliant with CEGIS. So majority of our computers, unfortunately, are not Windows eleven capable. Our server is almost nine years old, you can't even get parts for it anymore, so as you see, we got four bids.
They don't have a firewall at all.
We don't have a firewall, which was shocking.
Yeah, that's not good.
So, anyway, GBT is out of rush center, and we've done Next Tech. We're kinda leaning towards GBT because of the pricing. Um, there's quite a difference. If you go with just a yearly yearly fee for GBT, it's gonna be twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-nine cents, where versus uh Next Tech, it's gonna be thirty-three thousand a year. We do, we did submit to another person that Bob knows that does I T work between the two, they're gonna compare apples to apples, so we'll see where we're at on that. GBT by far was the most, they come in, when they came in, they impressed all of us, they went through Eric, the computer we had, where the majority of others didn't do that, so they were able to tell us which ones were.
First tech jokers, too?
No, we just got four bids, I mean, at some point, we gotta stop. I mean, we're we're wanting someone that has deals with law enforcement, and and they may, I don't know, but we just set out a deal list before, we called other sheriff's departments and went off the who they use.
Absolutely.
Um, Next Tech was kinda, we threw in at the last, because I don't know how much law enforcement they actually do, they do put servers in for them, but the GBT by far does law enforcement, they do rush centers and everything, um, so they are knowledgeable on our systems.
Yeah, the Interpool uh CAD and all that, they they know all the magic already, so it's not that that's gonna learn anything.
So, I mean, we just gave them, we want your input on that, you know, to see what you think as far as.
So GBT, this thirty-three, that's a year?
It depends on, if you notice on GBT, they come up with, they come up with, let me grab theirs, we can do an outright buyout of our own equipment, and it's gonna be about thirty-four thousand dollars, and then we'll have to pay a monthly fee of five hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents on that plan.
For like tech service and and that?
Right, so we out, we own the equipment, and then we pay the five sixty ninety-nine a month for them to basically do our I T stuff. Now, on the, they do have that lease program, and that's at twelve hundred and s- twelve seventy a month for the lease of the equipment, and they'll they'll update everything every three years, it's a three-year contract. Um, but you also have to still pay the five sixty ninety-nine a month with GBT.
How many computers is that?
We've got at least twelve. And we're gonna eliminate some of them, because what we've decided to do, all the the computers we're putting in patrol cars, they're gonna be non-compliant, because they can't, they're not gonna be Windows capable come October the fourteenth either.
But you still have some of your cars, your your laptops, you still have laptops?
We do, they're not laptops, actually, they're they're that and nine-one-one system.
Yeah, they're actually off-screen at a computer, however, those were purchased off a uh grant. Okay. That they did uh in twenty twenty, twenty-two, yeah, so.
So.
But they're not compliant.
They're not gonna be compliant with CEGIS as of October, so what we've kind of, what they gave us a bid on is a laptop for the patrol cars, and then we take it into the office into a docking station, so instead of having all the computer, computers in the car and in our desk, we're just gonna have one, you just take it from your car to your desk.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that saves some costs.
It'll save, yeah.
So.
Okay, how's it looking on your budget?
Well, that's something we gotta figure out, I mean, I've got, we we have no choice come October.
Yeah, we have.
So some of the stuff, the stuff that runs off a CAD, we can use nine-one-one funds, to what percentage, we don't know yet, our server, we can write part of the server off for nine-one-one funds, but I'll have to get with Ken, Grin, I T people, try to decipher exactly, you know, which ones are gonna have CAD, and how many, you know, and figure that out for nine-one-one funds.
And I think the server is a big chunk of the.
Of the cost, yeah.
So is this bid gonna be good till October, or you wanna try to get it switched over immediately?
Well, we don't have anyone now, we gotta get someone now, aren't, we're having so many computer problems. Well, we don't have anyone now, we gotta get someone now, aren't, we're having so many computer problems right now, it's, uh, we had Interpool on there going through our, on a computer in the back and when they tell you after they've been on for about an hour, hour and a half, you need your IT person. Things are really messed up in here, it's like, we have none. That's what got me on the ball to start doing IT.
It looks like you guys did a lot of research and uh, I'm in favor of purchasing them all, not the, not the lease.
I mean, that's kinda what your input on that.
In the long run, the lease will cost a little bit more.
So. But that's, that's the big deal, it's gonna be the money.
I'll be figuring it out.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Then we found out there isn't a firewall on there, of course. Uh, this guy from GBT says if I can get your IP address, he says I'd get in there right now.
He said he'd get into it right away.
And he'd get in our computers.
Yeah, I would, if, if we could, I'd like to table it till next week so I have a chance.
No, and that's fine, we don't give us a chance to have it reviewed by IT versus the algorithms. But I'm just letting you be aware of what we're dealing with here. Um, yeah, I don't expect, you know, but you know, we did get like A, A and S, they do uh, Sheridan counties. But the problem is, his was nine hundred and sixty dollars a month and that's not an equipment, that's just his fee.
For IT?
For, for IT strictly.
That's true.
And so, he's still higher than the monthly fee for, for GBT even.
Yes.
So, yeah, by all means, look at it, like I said, I want your input, I mean, but we've gotta do something.
So, do they think that every three years you need to upgrade?
Well, I didn't see, that's what's funny, Nextech does five years, they do three. And the three years, I mean, you notice alls I do on computers, things, I mean, it's changed within.
Sure.
Probably a year, less than a year. So.
My guess would probably be with as much information, as many programs as the sheriff's office runs, three years is probably the max that their computers is gonna be a little taller. Because they run, anytime their computers are running so many more programs with the nine-one-one system and all of that, their computers are probably running so much more.
Right.
Three years is probably the max that they're gonna be able to run. Now, Nextech was wanting to push it onto the five years and put them on the TAS agreement with us, which is fine. You know, we can do that, but again, I mean, how long, they're gonna be running so much more than our computers.
But that was twenty-seven fifty a month with them.
They're quite a bit higher though.
Yeah, it's not even close.
No. So, we're one apples to apples, so we said it, like I said, Bob's nephew's in IT up in Colorado, so we emailed to him and he's gonna hopefully give us a breakdown.
Sure.
Apples to apples.
And he kinda liked that GBT came in and explained.
They did.
They came in and explained, this is what you're needing on this computer. And they knew the, the law enforcement side.
They're experts on the law enforcement.
You know, they're just the standard, here's your computer, put what you need on it. So, then they're gonna have to still reach out to all these state systems and they don't know, they don't know what they need.
No, Bob and I, when it comes to computers, we're not knowledgeable at all. So, anyway, yeah, you can look at that and just, you know, I'd like your input on it. And like I said, that A and S, he was really knowledgeable, but the problem is, is the cost, the pricing there. I mean.
Right.
Um, and then we got one for CK Technologies and they were two thousand dollars a month. So.
So, absolutely, yeah, we'll put it on the agenda for next week and uh, I really appreciate you guys taking the time looking through all the different offices.
We're kinda forced right now because of all the problems that's up there going on. Um, I didn't know about October fourteenth until GBT's the one that informed us of it. So, and he said it's been, it's been over two years and everyone's known that it's gonna change, so. And some of the ones that are able to be Windows eleven compliant that we do have, they're gonna move them to where we can use them, so that's gonna help save some costs there too.
Yeah, cause my computer, Les's and then the debt bees is all.
Windows eleven.
So, we could use those at another spot in the sheriff's office, we don't have to purchase.
Right. So. And other than that, I mean, I don't have anything on the computers, I do, I'll let you, I can kinda give you an update on, we did have pitmans come in on electrical, I had electrical box.
Oh, right.
I can have them come in to give me an estimate. And what we found out, it was tied to our radios, so they had to change it out live while it's hot. It's something I wouldn't have wanted to do, so. But anyway. I wouldn't. But that's how we done it.
Oh, okay.
It's upside down. So.
Did we not get bids on that then?
Not on that, I didn't. I got wrote up, the fire, fire marshal came and I got wrote up on stuff that was there even last year that was not wrote up. So. We got wrote up on the generator. It hadn't been serviced since twenty-twenty-two and it's supposed to be annually. So, we got that taken care of.
And the generator, and that's just, when it goes out, it only powers.
The sheriff's office.
For you guys. So, and I think there's a grant out there for generators that we can maybe have Jason look into. So, we maybe get one big enough to run the whole place.
And that, yeah, I mean, that'd be for you, I mean, it'd be nice for you guys, I mean, for us, it's, we need it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's an old generator.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna send that, uh, we just got the deal back on them, so I'm gonna send that to fire marshal so I can get cleared on that. But as far as the bids, what I'm kinda doing, I'm trying to pass the business around. I'm not, I'm just trying to give everyone a piece of the pie. So. Um, and have you guys thought any more on, on getting the jail painted?
That's one of the things we talked to one person about, I guess we ever need to get a bid on that too. One or at least a couple of people.
Okay.
Sure. Maybe only one person be willing to do it.
Yeah, the person you talked to, they weren't interested?
I was.
I'm sure he would, yeah, we could reach out to him.
You're talking about Reggie? Yeah. Yeah, I talked to him, matter of fact, I seen him in Cameron's one day here about a month ago and so, it's something to do about painting. And he goes, wait, now you guys get back with it. So.
Does Ethan a possibility?
Right now, we do have inmates in there, so gotta go out to wait and when that time comes, if we get anyone, we'll have to transfer them out. We do have someone weld, we need some welding done on the benches that you guys saw. But we're, it seems like ever since uh, since we've got a hold of it, we've always got someone in there.
Why don't you go ahead and reach out to Reggie and get us a bid?
Okay.
I don't know who wants to, well, we could talk to Ethan too, possibly he could do it.
Yeah.
So, other than that, that's all I have.
It's probably, it usually needs to be done fast though.
Yeah.
When it happens, yeah, you're right on.
Yeah, cause we've already talked to Rooks, the time it happened, we can, we can.
Okay.
House inmates over there, but try not to if we can, you know?
Sure.
Alright. Alright, appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Thanks guys.
See you.
Did you wanna see the print?
Yeah.
It was just a bit of water sticking out the floor. I, I can't imagine why the fire marshal got a problem with it.
But if, when we get the inventory graph, I'm gonna say if that computer will do Windows eleven as well, I think you're gonna take that computer too.
Okay. That's good, 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 good.
So, that would be in our savings as well?
Yes. The server is, I think it's gonna cost.
Firewall is an issue as well, that's a concern.
Yeah, thirteen thousand for the servers, that's a third I think.
Yeah.
As you know, we do. We got Rodden Ridge and.
I know Rodden Ridge uses Tech, we use Nextech and I, I really like Nextech, but what we do, I just found that I, I don't know that they, they know, you know, I don't know.
Do law enforcement, it doesn't, you know, but I feel they're really.
Right.
Who killed for Nextech to give him the bid?
Uh, Shannon Oth Tunnel. That's who I've always met with here, so.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Alright, then you're up, perfect timing. Got that much report, our guy's out late and all over. Trying to fix some of the stuff that we tore up the other day. We didn't get all of them open, but we couldn't get down.
Most of them in the back is pretty well gone now, so.
Well, we had guys calling, I had to try to get to their cows in the oil field. That.
On the back roads, dirt roads?
That's where all your world is.
Well, yeah, but you should ask them, once you open that up, how are they gonna get down anyway? I got pictures of a guy stuck on a dirt road by the snow.
But here's the thing, everything, I opened it up Thursday or Friday, it's dry. I had, I had tunnels, they were eight feet tall. And Bill and I went out yesterday and everything I opened is, down the center of it's dry. But the ones we left snow in, nobody can't get down more, so.
You have trouble getting down that eight foot one?
That wasn't too bad, but I got stuck later on in the evening, slid off the road. If you got out of the center of the road, there's no bomb. But we tore it to ropes. At one time, we had sixth graders stuck and.
Yeah, that's hard also.
Yeah. Taxpayers want the roads open, we gotta try to get to them. I just finally told them, when I got stuck and I had been stuck for thirty years and I just, I told him, I said, let's just quit, we can't go anymore. So, Saturday morning, we went out and pulled two graders and the front end of them out. So, and just like now, Bill's out with a dozer on gear route because the guy wants to get over there to fix his fence, or to build fence. So.
Or you rode this?
That's north of John. Off, west of the Goddard Bay. And I think their pets probably got quite a bit of snow, so.
So, we got a helicopter to step over to or? I gotta get down the road anyway.
Well, if he waits in there, if he gets up to eighty-five degrees, then they dry out, if you get the center, the center. But like I said, the ones we left snow on, you ain't getting down now.
Well, that's since snow's about gone there too, just a little wind on the road, it'll be dry too.
Which one?
Like north of my house, all that snow there is pretty well gone, it'll be dry in a day or so.
Did we uh, did we clean out and didn't?
It didn't need to be, I mean.
Oh, I got a nasty text on Saturday, I had to go down and open another root, I'm not gonna say who, but, it said, boy, you're shooting a good job opening these roots and I probably just tapped him on the back until he showed me pictures of his picket stock. And uh, so I made a phone call to him.
Was it a white picket?
It was a red picket. But I went down, we were shut down, I went down there and our grader reparts at St. Peter, I went down and, he was ready, pulled out, but he needed to get down that root. So, I went ahead and cleaned it and then me and Bill was down there, cause we're looking at that B root or D root, one of the banks cut down for a second old fence and we didn't clean that one and it's got snow and it gets muddier and so. But the one that I cleaned, going south, where he had got snow, it is dry, in fact, all that snow is about melting off, but. It's our job, gotta do what we gotta do. So.
Well, I sure appreciate you sending the guy up here to do the horseshoe in the library.
Yeah, we uh, they had a tree root down on the backside of the library, we cut it up, swung it, held it to the dump. Just a big limb, about that big around, busted off, so.
One of those trees took a lot of air.
Yeah. I got two apple trees at my place that did, the one branch, it took the north side and folded it over top of the tree, broke it off. Anyway. That's about all I got, if you guys got any. Try to put everything back together. You know, Sean Markov wanted to get in, cause he had some wells down, two miles north of St. Peter, back west. So, Sat, or Friday, I plowed through there and got through. And I told him, I said, you're probably not gonna get down it. He had the power timing waiting, had some fuses blown or something over there. He said, yeah, he said, I told him, probably just wait till Monday. Which at first I thought that kinda made me mad, but then, after driving these roofs and seeing, they never got in on Monday. They finally left that snow in there, so. Anyway, what, what I cleaned was dried down the little root, you didn't need a full drive, but then it was rough where I kinda chewed it up, but even then, it wasn't that bad. So, everything we blew a hole in, it's dry. But everything we left the drifts on, they're just melting down into the ground, so. And I wouldn't have got stuck, but I slid off the road. It was so greasy and I was beep bopping along to try to get down or not get down, but whatever I did, I'm just going along and all of a sudden, the whole ground has went. And I was in crap. I got some pictures of you on there. At that time, we had sixth graders stuck at St. Peter. And we tore the, we tore the wrench truck up, about, about pulled it in half.
That's what I said, sometimes it just means you sit there and just wanna tear stuff up.
Well, we didn't do any different than we always have. You wanna see? So. That was, that was later. Clearly what we're doing. This is uh, the grader, this is just like a small corner.
Where was this at?
That was east of the feedlot now in St. Peter. Two west, one south, about a mile and a half. Oh, this is gonna be in.
How do you get this out? Would you get this out?
That's it, I was talking to you. This is bad. Multiple places east, so. But if I could, you know, if I could have stayed in the middle of the road, it was mud and I was off again at seven, eight mile an hour and all of a sudden, juke.
You don't want cats coming from these.
That's probably twenty-five hundred dollars.
So, my, that's a mess.
Well, I wasn't sure if Julie told you, but I called her Thursday, or I told her when she was up here Thursday, but I do appreciate your guys making my life easier up here.
I told Steve right away, I said, run up there.
I'm sure I can take a picket down and rose down. They weren't welcome. It very well is.
Oh, you like a bust.
Oh, yeah, it's all mine.
Well, here's what, was hell a bloody right there?
No, we just.
Here's something, cable through it. So, Taylor come down and hit me and he told Zach, he said, well, just let him wiggle around, he'll probably get out. Well, there was no getting out. Zach called me about a half hour later and he said, so did you get out? And I said, I've been stuck like this for thirty years. It was very, so.
Wow. Good moisture.
Yeah. In spots, there's some spots that's driving through drifts and.
Surely you could take those back and get warranty, right?
Oh, never. Uh, here's something I was gonna maybe bring up though. Them graders keep getting bigger, like the old G's, they weighed thirty-six, thirty-eight thousand. These new graders weigh about fifty thousand and then you add the snowplow to it. So I didn't know if we could maybe find a little bigger winch truck. That winch truck's a nineteen-seventy model and we're pulling stuff out with a half inch cable. It does pretty good, it's always does pretty good. We have wheel chocks we put on the back and then we tire graver to the front and just start pulling. And he was moving then and thought he was gonna get it out, then all of a sudden something popped and he tore the whole cross member out from under the, it wasn't welded in there real good though. But anyway, then when the cross member went, then the chain, the, um, part of the chain that runs the winch.
Right.
Let it come, so the chain got real loose and it bound up. That's kinda what got us. But we'll put it back together, so. We remember, you know, I got, when I was young, I was in the oil field, we had them winch trucks that were inch, an inch, an inch and a quarter cable, pulling stuff out like we're pulling with this little truck and I got the, the county, I thought, oh my God, you're gonna pull stuff out bad. It's been good, it's been impressive. It's, stuff keeps getting bigger. And then when you add the fact that you're stuck, and normally we wouldn't leave them out overnight in the mud, but I knew it wasn't gonna freeze, cause once you freeze them in there, then you probably ain't gonna get them out. So it, it was very cold. He's able to suck them out. And Bill, Bill pulled it, Brandon out, he was running the front end of it with the dozer.
How big cable these carry with it?
Oh, he's got a big one. We've never broke it. In fact, I think it might be an old oil field truck cable.
Right.
It's so big that a lot of your ham can't hardly carry it.
Right.
But he carries it on his dozer, when he, when he knows it's gonna be muddy. And that thing, you know, you can get him stuck, but he's run a dozer enough years that, you know, he'll never get stuck, but. Anyway, you know, if we'd have, if we'd have got a little bit more, you know, a lot of bit more snow, this had the same maintenance of that nineteen-eighty-seven with the sixty-five, seventy mile an hour wind.
Yeah.
We didn't get near the snow, cause back then we got twenty-some inches in the first snow and another twenty-some inches in second snow. If we'd have got more snow, it'd have been a lot worse.
They were saying it's really wet snow, this one.
It is really wet.
Yeah, if it'd been five inches colder, it'd be a huge difference too.
Well, I think it might have rained.
It did, cause I was up, it rained in the morning, around two-thirty and it was raining.
So there was about this much slush under them drifts. And as you're going along, it was just, the front tires looked like you were just blowing water out, out of your front tires, so. Them graders were amazing. Went through a lot of stuff. Have you guys, do you have a lot?
Wouldn't do that, really. Three, four inches?
A lot of wind.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, it sounds like equipment is something we, we really need to kind of look into all the way around, it sounds like.
Oh, I was playing with your nineteen-eighty-nine G for two days. It did pretty good, but then Mike had to go to the funeral on Friday, so I just went down to St. Peter and his blade and it's an H. It's probably twice the power and quieter and everything, but I was getting by with your G, but I couldn't, I couldn't clean one, I cleaned with that H, just because of the power, the extra power. But, and then see them M's are even heavier, the new, newer graders, they're heavier than an H, so. I thought we did pretty good. I mean, we didn't get them all. But I didn't have any more call me after, after I quit, other than the Saturday call.
I guess I could have had them all, you know?
You want to take pictures?
Where'd they go? I wanna hang them up. Rope breakers is what those were.
Worked a lot of hours. I got in, it's uh, Friday night, almost eleven o'clock. The other key heights was nine, so.
Infus rain next to it.
Yes. That'd have been nice if that would have been all rain.
Oh, yes.
Well, if you're done, I want to hear.
Okay, thank you. All right, can you, you got any other business?
I do not.
All right. Oh, make your motion to adjourn. A second. All right. Did you do this yet? I think there's something in there.